Twenty twenty four.
There we go.
Okay. Let's see, are there any additional agenda consent calendar items? Being none. Are there any delegations, Todd? I don't see any. Okay, let's turn our attention to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March twentieth, twenty twenty four.
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of March twentieth, twenty twenty four as submitted.
I'll submit it.
Any, uh, any discussion or changes?
Yes, um, page, it looks like, let me see, page one of three, under delegations, uh, one C, it says, uh, the fourth line down, it says Mike Foley, it says husband of Pat Foley, that should be son.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yes.
Yep. That was it.
Oh, son, okay.
You see it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, good touch.
Those kudos to Sandy.
Good, congratulations, thank you. Okay. Are there any other changes to her motion to approve? I think we did that, right?
Yeah.
I did, I second.
All right, then all in favor, uh, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, being none, motion carries. Next is the consent calendar. Pretty, pretty thin tonight.
All right, move to approve the consent calendar for April third, twenty twenty four, in the amount of seven hundred seventy nine dollars and thirty four cents.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
I only have a second, thank you. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries. All right, ground to new business. Discussion of possible action, Eastline Ambulance Fund, amendment to the memorandum of agreement, uh, to extend for one year. So, uh, this is, what we're doing is we're extending, uh, the existing agreement with the Eastline, uh, Ambulance Fund, Inc. And we're doing that, um, so we are, we want to preserve it, we want to keep it in place for one more year. We're in the midst of negotiations with the Eastline Ambulance Fund, and we're hopeful that before this expires, we'll have another, a new agreement in place. So, for right now, we just want to, uh, the idea is just to continue what we have for one more year while we finish up, uh, negotiations with the Eastline Ambulance Fund. So, what, what was the budget reflecting on that? Well, they're, they're outside of our budget. Okay. Yeah, they're, would, they provide service to the town from when you call the ambulance, that's who provides the service, and they're staffed by, uh, town employees, and, and they're, we're seeing if we can change the, uh, sort of the concept of how they're going to work with the town, but.
So, we are not paying for the EMTs that are written in here?
I mean, insurance company pays when you call the ambulance, and, and it pays Eastline Ambulance Fund, and then there's an amount that goes to, um, the responders, they get a stipend, I believe.
No, I'm just, I'm reading, am, am I in the wrong spot? I'm reading draft memorandum of agreement, right? It says, the town desires to hire two firefighters, emergency medical tech.
Right, this is the existing agreement, this isn't new, this is what, how it is right now.
But we don't pay for them, it comes out of the ambulance fund.
Um, well.
Can I clarify for you?
Yeah, can you explain that?
Okay, so, we do not, uh, the town doesn't, um, employ EMTs, we, we employ the ten firemen. So, when you read anything about like the EMTs, they reimburse the town for two of our junior firefighters. So, they pay for the wages for two firefighters, and then ten percent of our IT department, and then they pay for fuel for the fire departments and the ambulances that they own. Uh, and then some various equipment.
Okay.
So, with this proposal, if we're rolling the same one as we had, that's about two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, depending on how much those two volunteer, the volunteers, the two full timers work, right? Cause it's actual hours that get reimbursed. Um, so, let me just look year to date, um, I think, last year was about two hundred and twenty thousand, just going to pull it up real quick. Um, so it is about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
For two.
For, for.
No.
It's, uh, one eighty for two, and then additional forty for IT. So, overall, cash contributions from the Eastline Ambulance Association to the town is about two hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Um.
And there's also in kind contributions that they make, not cash.
Is there a written summary of some sort, uh, other than, like, what you can see? So, if I asked you for a printout of what the ambulance fund covers, pays for all of those types of things, could you provide that?
It's that document in front of you, that's really the only guiding document between the town and that organization, is that, that con, that, is it, and technically an MOU, Dan?
Yeah.
Is that, I think that's a memo of understanding on the firefighter contract, I think it's how it's written, right?
I see.
So, that's the only, um, to the best of my knowledge, that's the only document between the Eastline Ambulance Association and the town.
Okay.
So, all the, all those little inner workings are kind of like handshake agreements and.
Why I brought it up, so, it, cause, cause, you know, back in the day, it was always, you know, you were making an agreement, you're in handshake, and then you walked away. It doesn't work like that anymore, so I was just, since we're rolling this over, I understand it would stay the same, but as we move forward, I'd like to suggest publicly that there's more detail in what is going to be in that, as far as, you know, what it actually pays for, what it actually covers, what it's actually paying for, what the contributions are. Because if, if somebody asked, they wouldn't really know, and it's lucky that Kevin can tell us.
Well, you, you sort of have to figure out what the hourly rates are and, and do the math.
Right.
And to figure out what the contribution.
Right, but like moving forward in this next agreement that you're working on?
It, it might be, it might be a lot different.
Mm, okay.
Yeah, so, uh, and because it's a moving target, it depends on the, the rates that, um, you know, they're, they're paying. So, what this talks about is the number of hours, and how much they compensate the town, uh, for, uh, for the labor that we provide. And then there are some in kind contributions that are a little more nebulous, that are a little bit hard to quantify.
Okay.
Um, but that's part of what they do for us right now, and that's embodied in this agreement.
Okay.
Um, and I don't, I don't want to, you know, talk too much about what future negotiations are going to be, because we're still negotiating.
All right.
Uh, but it might be inappropriate at the moment, but, at any rate, we just want to keep in place what we have, so we have the opportunity to maybe come up with a better way.
Okay.
Any, uh, so do I hear a, a motion to approve?
So, basically, just another question.
Yeah, sure.
So, this draft memorandum of agreement, this is going to then be put in place up until the time that something new gets settled and formulated?
This, yeah, oh, I didn't mean to pick up.
No, 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 that's, that's it.
So, this is in place, this is what's in place right now.
Okay.
And they put us on notice, um, in, in here, there's language that, um, if they want to terminate the agreement, um, you know, they put us on, uh, a notice, ninety days.
Okay.
So, we're in that window right now, and we don't want this agreement to end in June. We want to have this extended one more year, because we're in the midst of trying to negotiate a different agreement as we make changes to the, um, fire, uh, system, fire department.
That will also impact this.
It'll impact this, and so, uh, we're trying to come up with a, a way that works really better for the town and better for the ambulance fund as well. But, we just, right now, we want, we don't want this contract to end, uh, we want, and there, you know, we both want it to extend for another year.
Okay.
So, we can live with, with this, and then try to do something that's, uh.
And they're good with that, too?
Yes, they want that, yeah, so it's in both our interests.
Okay, understood.
At this time, yep.
Okay, so, um, resolve that the first selectman is hereby authorized to execute in the name and on behalf of the town, an amendment to a memorandum of agreement between the town of Eastline and the Eastline Ambulance Fund, Inc., dated June nineteenth, two thousand nineteen?
Yeah, twenty nineteen, yeah.
Okay.
All right, do I hear a second?
A second.
Great, thank you. All right, any further discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, being none, motion carries. All right, we have some departmental transfers.
I'll just do the motion first, and then we can discuss it. All right, move to ratify departmental transfers in the amount of, what is it, two hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and thirty four dollars and three cents, processed for fiscal year end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and to forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Jason, uh, discussion?
Is that this little sheet?
Yeah, we have this sheet here, and it's a little bit, uh, hard to read, but, um.
It's.
And maybe, Kevin, you just want to give an overview, just basically what, what, what we seek to accomplish?
Sure, um, so, just so the board knows, every quarter, I meet with all the department heads, and we go through their budget, um, talk about pain points in their budget, uh, challenges, where they have savings, and where they're going to have overruns. So, really, my goal is to go before the boards every quarter, um, the last couple quarters, just, they sneak up on us, so, we're doing the last three quarters at once. So, really, these are just, um, run-of-the-mill overages or, um, savings in lines, and, uh, we give the departments, um, a little flexibility to say, okay, if you want to go to a training, and you know you have money left over, and you're missing any supplies, instead of spending the money in the wrong line item, we're going to move the money to the correct line item, and then spend it. So, that way, in future years, when we look at a budget, and we say, oh, that department spent three thousand miscellaneous supplies, but if you dig into that number, there's eleven hundred dollars of training, or there's eleven hundred dollars of mileage, or whatever. So, um, what I like to do and, and, you know, preach to the department heads is, um, you put the, the right expense in the right account, just because there's money left there, we don't, we don't, you know, just shuffle the funds to different accounts. It has to be, um, you know, the appropriate account for the, the right expense.
Can you, can you explain this? I'm just trying to.
Which one are we looking at?
Just, in general, I'm just trying to understand it, so.
Do you want to walk through the spreadsheet?
Just even the first one, just so I can see where the money's going.
Okay, so, that first line, the emergency management.
Yep.
Um, asked for two hundred and twenty dollars and thirty four cents to be moved from telephones to miscellaneous supplies, um, for nine-one-one telephone service, uh, some sort of contract that was a little higher than anticipated.
So, it went from miscellaneous supplies to telephones?
Other way around, from telephones.
From account to account, the two and the froms are backwards.
Okay, that, I, okay.
So, the first one should be from, the second one should be to.
So, that's, okay, understood. All right, so then the next one would be, it went from unemployment compensation to eviction moving?
Correct, from, to, okay, so, like, the first one to cover an overage in the telephone line, the second one, um, is to cover.
What's?
Unemployment expected overage, yeah, eviction, I believe that is for the trailer. So, let me keep looking here, it might, we might have been right on the two and the from, the first one just might have been backwards. Uh, transcripts, it's only fourteen dollars, it was only one transcripts, two, from. Yeah, I think we were originally right with the two and the from, the first was just backwards.
Okay, all right.
Yep. Um, this is hot off the press, you can see there's a transfer as of yesterday on this.
No, no, that's fine, I'm, I was just trying to understand it, that's all.
But, no, you're, you're a hundred percent correct, so, a lot of these are, um, you know, there's some, um, transfers from the town payroll contingency to cover, um, you know, overages or increases, things like that. Is there any particular ones we want to talk about, want to go through each one?
So, this is accounting for flexibility within the budgeting process.
Correct.
At a department level.
Correct, yeah, we didn't add anything, so that's a zero sum.
Yeah, they're, they're equal each other.
Correct, yeah.
But what it does is it refines how the money is used, and where that's really important, even last night, when we're going through the final run, uh, through the budget, we're able to see, for a particular account, how much they've used percentage-wise up to this point in time. And then, and when we're trying to say, well, you know, maybe they need a little less, they can get by with a little less the next year, they haven't really used up, uh, you know, all of it, probably should have at this point in time in the budget, or maybe they need a little more. And, uh, so, this is an attempt to make the use of these funds more accurate, and that's really important when we're in the budget process.
Next year, this will help refine.
It helps refine how the money was really used, um, more accurately, and, uh, and that helps us, and when we're making close judgment calls on the budget, it helps us.
So, Kevin, just another question, um, there's, uh, audit contingency, so, was it going from the audit to contingency?
Nope, other way around, so it is coming from contingency to audit, our audit fees this year, um, so we've done two audits this year, um, and I tried to work with the auditors, to say, okay, we know we have an audit every year, let's backdate the bills, uh, to the year they're in, um, but they were not flexible with that. So, we are going to pay for two audits this year out of the budget, um, twenty-two and twenty-three. So, next year, we'll pay for twenty-four and probably twenty-five. So, we have to cover, we only had sixty thousand in that line, uh, the audits now are eighty thousand dollars apiece, so, um, you're probably going to see another one before year end there as well. So.
Kev, can I, I just ask one, just one line, I'm like curator for the, um, Brookside Farm.
Oh, this is my favorite one, so, we had a meeting with Brookside Farm last budget year, they had a budget of twenty-six, twenty-five thousand, like, five-eighty, um, and their intent was to hire a, a curator. And, and the first selectman's budget meeting, um, he said, you know what, do you have anyone in line? No, we don't, but we're advertising, he said, well, we'll cover that from, uh, we'll cover that from contingency if we hire somebody. The next week, they hired somebody, all right, for the full amount, twenty-five thousand, five-eighty, I believe it was, um, and we only had six thousand budgeted, um, so we have to, you know, obviously, pay for that individual versus perch.
But the item, the question I was going to ask was, a curator was, was apparently budgeted for nineteen-five?
It was budgeted for six thousand, hold on here, six thousand dollars, and it's going up to the twenty-five thousand dollars.
So, what does nineteen-five mean? Oh, from the sixty-five, I got you.
Right, they already budgeted.
I got you, so now, the town PR contingency, what does that mean?
That's the town payroll, and so, the town has.
Well, I thought it was public relations, all right.
Not, not public relations, public, uh, payroll. So, we have, um, the general contingency for emergencies, like when the wall fell down, that's where we pulled that out of, the audit fee is being pulled out of that general contingency, but when there is an increase in wages, or if there is a, um, change in staffing, things like that, the payroll contingency covers that.
Gotcha.
So, like, in this budget season, um, in twenty-five, we have a two hundred thousand dollar contingency, that's to cover the non-affiliateds, and, and whatever else is happening. So, that's, you know, it's, a lot of that money's already planned and, and allocated to different things. Um, in the current budget, there's three hundred thousand, oh, I'm just pulling it up. So, yeah, we have a, uh, contingency of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for town payroll, uh, we've, uh, spent about forty-six thousand dollars out of that line. And I know we have to do a, a transfer for, um, the firefighter negotiations when that comes through, and I believe police were settled earlier this year, so we have to do, um, break that out as well. So, it's not like we just have three hundred and fifty thousand sitting there to, to spread around, spread around, those were allocated, um, very similar to what we did with the non-affiliates this budget year.
Thank you.
So, like, under Public Works, it says, um, uniform allowance, so it's twenty-five hundred dollars?
So, are you looking at, uh, February fifth?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so, the February fifth, um, I tried to, I have to get a nicer spreadsheet, if you can kind of see, there's lines that separate cer, that separate certain groups of accounts.
Yeah.
Yes.
Those are one journal, that's one transfer, so when you look at two-five, it says Public Works, those, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, those eight accounts on the left side offset the, one, two, three, four, four accounts on the right side, does that make sense? So, they, they total up, but we transferred, you know, eleven hundred from one account, ten thousand from a highway account, twenty-five hundred from, um, uh, uniform allowance, and we moved that over to storm materials, fleet fuel, scare tipping, and payroll.
So, within that group, they add up and balance.
Correct, yep, everything totals at the bottom, if you go to the very bottom of that worksheet, um, we, we tie.
So, the two in the from account up on the top aren't necessarily accurate, am I right saying that? Two, and the very top.
I think they're backwards.
Department.
I think they're backwards, I don't have all the.
Contingency will always be on the from side, right?
Yeah, yep.
So, if you see a column with contingency in it, that's got to be the from side, we're taking money out of contingencies and putting them into actual places where we needed the money.
Oh, got it, okay.
So, it's right then.
The columns could have been.
All right, understood, okay.
But, there wouldn't be a circumstance where, right now, we're going to add to our contingency account.
Okay, understood, no.
Yeah.
And you will notice, when we get closer to the bottom, I do not like to touch the contingency unless it's truly, uh, an emergency, so, um, so, you'll notice some of these, like, retirement liability, we only have three months left of the year, and we're sitting pretty good on the retirement liability. I haven't heard of any grumblings of anyone retiring or submit their retirement paperwork to me, um, so I started using some of that money instead of the contingency to cover some things. Cause there's still over a hundred thousand in there, so, got some room there.
So, is this two hundred and seventy thousand, is that contingency?
Uh, no, 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 some of it is, I mean, if you look, there's twelve thousand cover audit fees. I think that's the only one, um.
Oh, I see it now, okay.
So, just to let everyone know, that forty thousand, you already approved, um, didn't catch that on my review, so it's only two hundred and thirty thousand, really, but, doesn't hurt to have it approved.
The vehicle maintenance you're talking about?
Correct, yep, remember that was the emergency approval?
Yeah.
For the fire truck.
For the fire truck.
For the fire truck, yeah.
So, what happens is, just so everyone knows the process here, every transfer is recorded on like a PDF, and like, it's signed off by the department, signed off by the finance office, and then it's memorialized in like a three-ring binder, and so then we take that three-ring binder and translate to this paper. So, that's kind of where some of the discrepancies are.
Okay.
Um, and like, we keep track of every transfer, whether we made it or not, so that's kind of why that forty thousand got stuck there.
Okay.
Sure, and we already did that forty thousand.
We already did that forty thousand, but, um, this is a good audit documentation, just say, okay, we approved them all, here's the work paper.
We've already done all these things.
No, no, I mean, approve, the board of selectmen only approved that one line item.
No, so forty thousand.
Yep, I think it was two months ago, maybe.
Yeah, it was a real emergency, had to get it fixed, didn't have the luxury of time.
Yeah.
So, now, I'm confused, uh, these transactions have not yet happened, or they have happened, but have not been approved?
These transactions have happened, but haven't been approved.
Yes, okay.
So.
And if we were to not approve, for some reason, that would.
That'd be very bad, but, um.
All that money would have to be.
They'd have to come back, it, not the end of the world, but, um. I mean, like, we need that audit, so, um, some of these aren't really, like, some of these are statutory, like, um, the overage on the grand list books, we, you know, we have to have that grand list book, it's a requirement. Dispatchers, there's overage on dispatchers, I believe that was prior, um, the dispatcher's contract language, there was one sentence that changed, um, the full-time dispatchers have first right of refusal on open shifts, that costs us a hundred thousand dollars. So, now, we don't have a single part-time dispatcher really filling any shifts, and there might be an actual part-time dispatcher we have as part of our personnel, but that person may work a shift a year, a shift a quarter, and they're working very minimal shifts. So, um, that, uh, February fourth rate there, we transferred twenty thousand part-time dispatch to overtime, so, um.
That's really an accounting transaction, I mean, we've already, we're, every day, we're writing checks and paying bills, and what we want to do is catch up the accounting, uh, to make it as accurate as possible with what the reality is.
Yeah, not even really, you know, the accounting's already done, it's the budgeting aspect of it, right? Just like, okay, it's, uh, some of it is a formality.
Well, it's also informative for us to know where money is kind of zinging around.
Yeah.
It helps us to better understand.
Later, yeah. Do we have a motion on the table?
Wait, do we, did we have a second? I thought we did.
Yeah, we did, we just need to.
Yeah, we just wanted, any, any further discussion, or? Okay, then if none, um, those in favor of the budgetary transfers signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries, good. Let's see, I don't think, are there any, I don't think there are any opinions tonight, are there?
No.
No, so we'll just, uh, table that the next time. Okay, the Cheney fishing dock leases, do we have any, uh, anything new on that?
Yes, um, excuse me, Roseanne and Jason, the, uh, I did meet on a short notice with the attorney this week, and presented the leases, but it suggested changes. The only changes in the leases would be to not dispense fuel on their own at the dock, that, that could, if, if fuel was spilt, that could shut down all boats that are there, because the whole area gets contained. So, they have to have it done by a licensed dispensary, you know, a guy coming in a truck and giving fuel. Uh, the other thing is, Blackhawk is on a three-year lease, uh, I shouldn't assume, but I, I proceeded, because the guys are all worried about security and wanting to keep them slips, is that I've put down a three-year lease for them as well, the other two boats. And, uh, uh, just knowing the business a little bit, they cannot sublease to anyone else that's been interjected into the lease, and if their boat is out of commission due to major repairs and hauls or something, and you put, they use another boat or find another boat to put there, they just have to, also have to notify the lesser us that they're doing that, and to make sure it's insured and we know. Tracy and I, from the attorney firm, got us pretty well covered there, I have not presented it yet to the captains, I want to get it done and present to them, uh, includes a, a nominal price increase each year of the lease, uh, a five-year, five percent, and, um, that's what's been happened in the past with the Blackhawk on their long-term lease. And once I get it back, hopefully this week, I'll present it to the cap, to your review, and to the captains for, uh, their signature and start paying rent.
So, there's a five percent each year?
Yes.
Okay.
Good work, Dan.
Yeah, and they'll be, uh, everybody will be on a three-year basis.
Hopefully, hopefully they'll agree to that, if not, and, and there's, there's both easy way escapes if they need to escape, or business issues, whatever, or some catasters happens, whatever, but, um, somebody shuts down fishing, or something like that, whatever. But, it, it, they really want the, they want those docks, and they're perfect for them, they're not good for the public, so if you have other thoughts that you can make money with the public, it's a big disaster there, yeah.
So, are these leases, are they, um, on the same schedule, the three leases, or are the three years up at different times?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure on that, Blackhawk ends, um, at, at the end of this year, I'm not sure of the other two, because they, they would have been expired for a year.
Okay.
It'll be nice if we do get, you know, if it ends up on the same schedule, we're not doing this every year.
All right, I'll see if I can, I can make the dates on that happen, so, we have.
Maybe you make the first.
No, they will.
To, to say, okay, it's two years, and then after that, three years, so that it does end, you know what I mean?
I'll make it so it ends this year, because the leases, um, uh, do, are for this year, so, they're going to owe the one from January, they're paying, two payments, by the way, they, they're going to owe it from January to June, and then from July till December, yeah, uh, so, I'll be, I'll get them on the same schedule.
Yeah, it just makes it easier for everybody.
For everybody, yeah, very good, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And it's all, it's a lot of work doing that.
No, it's not, it's, it's what I do, it's okay.
I know, well, no, I knew, and we, I knew we had the right group, so, that's great, all right. Okay, um, ex officio reports, do we have any ex officios tonight?
I met, uh, with, uh, Inland Wetland Agency last night, um, there, there really wasn't too much, it was actually a short meeting, however, what's been coming up on various occasions is the school buses that are placed opposite the, um, the middle school.
Yeah.
Where the, where they're situated, and Inland Wetlands is concerned, because there's wetlands back there, and they're asking, basically, is there any other place that we could place these buses? So, uh, that, that was the, the issue that, that was raised to me.
Cause it's not a por, they're on a, a porous.
It's on, yeah, like a gravel, and, um, so we're even thinking maybe put in some, um, they were saying some kind of like, um, sedimentation controls, or, you know, riprap or something, just to help with the water, something even temporary, no, yeah.
Is it actually wet?
That's what they're saying, yeah, so they're saying that if they put something there now, temporary, until we find a place. So they're saying that if they put something there now temporary until we find a place, a more permanent place for the buses, uh, so.
This is not a new problem, it was identi-.
No, I don't think it is.
It was identified in the beginning, and that was on, that was supposed to only be a temporary fix. Temporarys become fifteen years, with them idling their buses and polluting the stream behind it, in the wetlands.
Roseanne, where were they housed prior, do you remember?
Prior to that, uh, I don't know that we had, um, some of the bus drivers actually took the bus, drove the buses home.
I thought it was the town garage, so I thought, that's what I thought anyway.
But, um, this occurred after we, uh, after we negotiated an agreement with the bus company. Before that, we ran the bus companies, company ourselves.
Yes.
So I don't know what year that would be, but it's been quite some time.
It has.
And this was, uh, initially, this was promised to be a temporary housing. And since that time, the bus fleet has also increased considerably. So I, I agree that this is a matter of concern, and we knew in the beginning it was a matter of concern. And it's just gone on and on, so I agree, this is time to do something about it.
What would, what would, um, allay their concerns? Do we know if, if there was an impervious surface under it, but then you'd still have runoff off of the impervious?
They weren't really clear, I think what, what I said was, um, I think they're gonna, Gary Geisell was gonna talk to, I guess, I think Joe Bregaw, and, and see if, you know, what could be done. And then also, there was an issue about, um, or it was brought up, where maybe if the buses could be placed at, close to, I guess, um, where the transfer station is, I guess there's some other space there, or, um, property that the town owns. Um, and so that was just something that I said, you know, I would bring up and that, maybe try to speak to, um, Joe Bregaw about it. Um, and Gary Geisell was gonna try to speak to him too, to s- to see what, I think we have to do something for the short term at that area, and then try to figure out what to do with the buses in, in the long term. I did speak to Mike Finkelstein at one point, um, just seeing, to see if we could keep them over at the, uh, the new police station, Public Safety Building, but he said that that's wasn't a possibility.
They've got a lot of equipment over there now.
Yeah, so that, that wasn't a possibility, so.
And one thought I had was where the old, um, was it Romagna Road, but then that's.
That's what they were saying, exactly.
But that's near the river too, I mean, that's the same problem.
And there's also, um, recall it, when this quarrying has taken place, and then there's.
Oxidation?
Sediment?
No, there's, uh, big pits, uh, uh, that are filled with, with water, quarries. Quarries is what they are.
Oh, quarries, oh, 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 quarries, yeah.
And those are, uh, on that Romagna Road property, uh, behind, behind the, it runs behind the transfer station, and then they run all the way down to, uh, all the way down, down Riverview, for the most part.
Yeah, well, this is something we have to think about, so we can come up with a solution to make it better. I'm glad you brought it up.
Yeah, so that was, yeah, so we'll see.
Put our thinking.
Dan, the, um, last year's ten-year plan that was presented from the Board of Ed had a Bus Depot relocation plan this year. In this current year, it, it didn't get put in, and I don't see it in the ten-year plan again. So it might be worthy of discussion to see if that just kind of got dropped out of there.
Okay.
Cause they just had a TBD in last year for it.
Oh, okay.
But they were, they were planning on doing it this year.
What?
They were planning on doing it this year, so.
That was in the capital plan?
This was in the capital plan, the ten-year capital plan, last year when they submitted it.
When I began in this, in the Wetlands Agency, and this was an issue that came up, like, two thousand seventeen perhaps.
Yes.
Which has been ongoing.
How much, how much did they have in there for?
Just TBD, it just said TBD.
To be determined, yeah, okay.
I just can't imagine where they would place it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we, I think it's something we really have to think about. I mean, now that we know this is a problem, I didn't, I wasn't aware of it.
Yeah, it's been a longstanding problem.
They've been there for at least, at least fifteen, if not twenty years, at least fifteen.
And I know it's degrading the road where they step off of the road onto the, it's, it's, I know, I heard about that. But I didn't think about the pollution aspect of it.
Yeah, that's the issue.
Let's, let's start thinking about it, so we can come up with some ideas, solutions. Alright, anything else in the Wetlands that's interesting?
No, the only other thing I was gonna comment, just for, uh, the publics, is that at the library, there is a survey that is on the town website for people to take, um, to see what they want for the, the library and I think the community center, and we're encouraging everybody to take that survey.
Okay. Alright, let's move.
Well, I had the historic, I didn't, I wasn't able to go, but the historic's had their meeting last night.
Okay.
Um, we can review the meeting minutes.
Alright.
I was, um, the moderator, so I wasn't, I was doing.
Don, anything?
Uh, one thing that kind of impressed me, um, at, I went to the Wells School meeting, and, uh, nothing exciting yet, except one person asked a question on the ninety-five project, were the stormwater drains being, uh, one person said it didn't appear that they were being filtered and capped and trapped or any runoff and things like that. And so I took the note, I didn't know who to call, Anne shared, that's Joe Bregaw.
Yeah.
And so I contacted Joe, Joe says, no, you wanna contact this guy, who's a retired engineer with the state, who's now head of Project Environmental. And so I sent him a note saying, this is one of the concerns of one of the commissioners, is it being done? I'm very impressed with the process, this is his response back the next day. I would like to assure you that environmental requirements are being closely monitored, and, and we are in compliance. Project has a full-time environmental inspector and coordinator to monitor stormwater discharge and collection. Like to, like, possibly have a meeting with you or call to discuss project specifics and, and our actions regarding environmental ma- matters. Uh, please feel free to contact me. So, uh, from Joe, from Anne to Joe to this guy, they've got it covered, and they're doing the job.
They're impressive.
Yeah, and, and, and then to get, send back to the board who, who thinks that it wasn't being done, I should forward this to House, just to make sure we have it on record that we, we, I'm, I'm very impressed with that, it, it's taken care of, and somebody answered very straight up, like, oh, okay, let me go check it, no, this is what's happening.
Yeah, I, I, any of, um, my interactions with them so far, and I'll, you know, I've been here a couple of months, but, uh, they get right back, I had a question the other day, uh, I spoke, uh, it was like after five o'clock, and I sent email to, uh, the public relations person, first thing in the morning, uh, got back to me, and, you know, any questions, and come on down, you know, try to explain, uh, what we can, and, uh, so they're very responsive.
Yeah, and this is a qualified guy, he's retired COT engineer, who's now been in charge of compliance for environmental, for this project. I mean, all the bases appear to be covered and, and no problem responding, and, I mean, I was, I was impressed.
Yeah, they're well-staffed, that's good to hear.
That's, that's about it, nothing exciting on the Wells School.
But that's important, thank you. Roseanne, anything?
Uh, zoning will meet tomorrow night. Uh, this is a continuation of the conceptual plan for development behind Tri-Town, known as the Tight Look Property. And, uh, they've had two exten- extensions on that, and now tomorrow night, they have to make the final decision.
Okay, thank you.
And this is only a conceptual plan, they could still have to, if the, if the conceptual plan was approved, then they would have to come back with further development plans.
Right, okay. Jason, anything?
Uh, yes, I attended the Brookside, Brookside Farm Museum meeting, um, earlier this, or last month. Um, there's been some vandalism happening there, um, which is, uh, a sensitive subject that they're trying to address. They have a calendar of events, there's some really cool stuff coming up. They have a cleanup of the property on April eighteenth, they have a plant sale happening May fourth. And May nineteenth, they will have their regularly scheduled tea with a special guest speaker, our own Marjorie Meecoff.
What date is that, the tea?
Uh, the nineteenth of May is the tea.
Okay.
And I'm really excited, because I am a tea snob, and I have all kinds of teas that I'm excited to try and share with, with these fine folks.
So, Jason, sorry, I just wanted to ask a question, um, on the vandalism, is that occurring during the day or at night? Or what is the, if they, if now?
I would, I would, uh, direct you to the director of the Brookside Farm Museum, because it is kind of of a sensitive nature, and I don't really think it should be part of the public record here.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I've had meetings with them, and discussions, so, but, as Jason suggested, really don't wanna go into it too much.
Okay, great.
Also, the Stars to STEM program that runs out of the, um, planetarium at the high school has wrapped up its winter series, and is looking to start its spring series shortly, and I'm very excited to say that my participation in their, uh, organization is kind of coming to fruition later this month, at, um, a musical performance that will happen in the planetarium. I have a lovely little flyer here, April twenty-sixth, seven to ten, open to the public, free to all, all ages.
Looking forward to it.
Aren't they doing something for the eclipse?
Yeah, for the eclipse, right?
Oh my goodness, yes, that's happening through the library, the library is doing, on Monday.
They partnered with them, didn't they?
Yes.
Stars to STEM, yeah.
From one to, oh gosh, four, maybe, I think, with the library, they're doing all kinds of events outside, they're gonna have a viewing party when the eclipse actually happens on, uh, Monday afternoon.
On Monday?
Yeah.
We picked up our glasses over there.
Yeah, I just picked mine up too. Oh, they're available at the library too, per family.
And the rain date is in twenty thirty-two. Who knows on that?
Better be sunny. So that's, that's all I have.
The, uh, I'm sorry, hope for a sunny day. So let's see, uh, ex officio, oh, there you go. So I attended, uh, the Police Commission meeting in March, and Detective Gene Babcock retired from the Police Department. And, uh, Detective Kirkot was assigned to the detective unit, so it was, uh, a new role for him. Let's see, uh, the, the department has, you know, has been progressing over the last several years, and now they're starting on what they call Kalia accreditation, and that's a national accreditation. And so they've advanced to the, uh, to that accreditation process, and it's, it's really, uh, quite involved of what it, you know, not just getting the accreditation, but then keeping with the accreditation afterwards, is, uh, it's a lot of effort, but they're really committed to it, and, uh, I think we can be really proud of our Police Department for, for, uh, going the extra mile and getting those accreditations. Just a little statistic, there, in February, there were one thousand one hundred and forty-nine calls per service from our Police Department.
In one month?
In one month, one thousand one hundred and forty-nine, yep. So that's just one, there are other statistics, but I thought that was interesting. So that's my ex officio report. And then I guess, oh, I still, I get the floor again, so, uh, first selectmen's report. You know, I got to do a few, uh, interesting and fun things the last few weeks. Uh, I'll announce at the Blue Door, they held an open house to showcase a new location at three eighty-eight Main Street. Unfortunately, I had a conflict, I didn't get to attend that, but, uh, that's their new place, and, um, I'm sure they'd be happy for anyone to stop by and, and see, uh, what they have there to, you know, help people, medical supplies. Uh, it's really a great thing that they do.
And Dan, is that a temporary spot? Are they looking for a permanent spot?
Well, it's, I mean, it's, it's temporary, so it's, yeah. But for right now, that's.
That's where they are.
A good place for them to be, and, uh, I don't know how long their lease is for, I don't know any of the details about it. And then I attended the ribbon cutting at The Mix at two seventy, two seventy-seven Main Street, and that's on the second floor. So above where the, uh, next door to the, uh, where the theater was, uh, there's a second floor there, and there's a little door, maybe you didn't notice it, but that's two seventy-seven Main Street, and there's three new businesses that have rented space up there. One is called Intuitive Grace Massage and Wellness, um, and then Liberation Physical Therapy, and, uh, Niantic Art Sanctuary. So, um, three businesses that rent space up there, and, uh, another, another thing you can, uh, do on Main Street.
And a great idea though, of a multifaceted use of that space. It's a very interesting space, I knew, I knew the owner of Idlax that, but when you go upstairs, it was a good idea to do that.
Yeah, they sectioned it out, and they have, in a different areas, and so people who provide services, and maybe they don't wanna rent a whole office.
Exactly.
And it's, uh, limits the overhead and gives them a nice, and they complement one another. I think the Niantic News might have been up there years and years ago.
I think, yeah.
That's a long time, I think that's where it was, yeah. And then, uh, this past Saturday, I got to attend, uh, the Eagle Scout Court of, Court of Honor induction ceremony. It was at the American Legion, and Ming, Mingwin Dawn, uh, he was awarded the Eagle Scout designation. Exceptional young man, it was very nice to meet him, got to meet his family, and, uh, shared some food there with them, and it was very nice. It was a nice afternoon for me. And let's see, um, oh, and then the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, we, uh, we received a nice tour of the high school, and that was very helpful, especially during the budget process and understanding, you know, the needs and realities of the Board of Education. So, got to do that, and that was, uh, gave me a lot of insight that I didn't have. That's my report for this evening.
Dan, I, um, neglected to bring the painting, uh, from Rosanegra to this meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna try to pry that out of your hands, uh, later, but.
I was able, I attended, uh, an event in Rosanegra in Dan's place, and, uh, received a painting that was donated to the town, and it is in my house, and I forgot to bring it here, and I'm very sorry, but, you might, it'll stay there until next meeting.
Well, it's pouring rain anyway, so you probably set our off.
Yeah, that's true.
I was thinking, probably better than you.
That's exactly why I did it, thank you very much.
What's the theme of the painting?
It is the Niantic Bay Boardwalk.
Striking.
It really is.
I put a picture of it on my Facebook page, and, and, you know, I've got a lot of comments about it. It's, it's, you know, there's something about it, yeah, it's striking.
Where is it going to go, I'm just very curious.
Well, it won't be in my office as much as.
I was gonna say, your office?
No, no, we're trying to find the best place here, so everybody can enjoy, I have a couple ideas, but I don't wanna say where I'm thinking yet until I talk to a couple of people.
It's gorgeous, that's the boardwalk? Yeah, it has multi-colored.
By multi-colors, yeah, it's really.
Yeah, it's, it's really unique.
Yeah.
I think Sandy might have a photo, maybe she found it, yeah, it's beautiful.
In your house?
There you go, lobby.
And the lobby might be nice.
Yeah, I'd like to pass it over, there we go. Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but I gotta, I wanna talk to the.
Yeah, I've seen it, it's really spooky.
I'm sorry for intruding on your report, I just.
No, no, that was, no, I, I, uh, let's, yep, wow.
Yeah, isn't that cool?
There's something about it, very, very nice. It's a big fire.
By Ecuadorian artist, Fernando Zumba.
Yep, very nice, wow.
Given to us, um, in partnership with Jeanette from Rosanegra.
Wow, that's real nice.
You know, I did have that on my list, I skipped over it, I'm glad you got it, alright, good, yeah, it was right here, okay. Yeah, so, that'll be cool, we'll get that, we'll get that hung up, and, uh, so everybody can enjoy it. Okay, public comment, I don't see anyone here. Uh, let's see, and there's no selectmen's response, so I'll adjutant a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn the April third, twenty twenty-four regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen at seven forty-eight P M.
Go ahead, a second, alright, we have it, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, adjutant. Thank you.